We're good to go. Thank you, Alyssa. It is 7:10 and we're going to call this State and City Council meeting to order for Monday, February 5th. Will you please join me in the flag salute?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and thanks for your patience on the technical difficulties there. We're good to go. With that, we'll start with the announcements. Any additions to the agenda?
Yes, Mayor, we'd like to add an OLCC permit for the 505 collective to the agenda.
Okay, thank you. Where would you like to add that?
Oh, general business.
Say, we'll do it on general business.
Yeah, we could do it at the beginning of it. It will be pretty quick.
Okay, we'll put it right in there. OLCC permit.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to add, I don't know if we want to just add this under the communication portion or to the agenda, but just a council discussion on SMAC, the Small Municipalities, guy who works with the lobbyist who came in and did the presentation. We never had a really chance to have a conversation following up on that.
Okay, thank you, Council Julia. We'll add it at the bottom when communication from council.
All right, sounds great.
Okay, is there any other additions to the agenda? Is there any declaration of ex-party contact, conflict of interest, bias, et cetera? No? This is an opportunity for public comment. Is there any public comment, Alyssa? No? Okay. Anybody wish to give a public comment real quick? Okay, don't hear any. This is with a consent agenda from January 22nd, City Council work session minutes to January 22nd, City Council regular session minutes, and Resolution Number 1089 appointing Jonathan Pen Rice to the Budget Committee. Council?
Mr. Mayor?
Council Julia?
I move that we adopt the consent agenda as presented.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded to adopt the consent agenda as submitted. Any discussion? Halls in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Presentations, any presentations tonight, Julia? Nope, thank you. Public hearings, none, correct?
Correct.
That leaves us to general business, and we will start with the OLCC permit for 505. Julia?
Thank you. So, new liquor licenses generally have come to the City Council for approval, and we got this application late last week without them realizing that they went to City Council. We had already gotten the packet out and the agenda out, but if we waited till the next City Council meeting, it'd be February 20th, and they have some plans for the Valentine's Day holiday. So, we just, and it's generally a fairly straightforward process. Chief Johns reviewed the permit and recommends approval of the permit, and so rather than having them wait until the 20th, we thought we would bring it to you tonight to see if we could get your okay to sign and move this OLCC permit forward.
Okay, thank you for doing that. Chief, thank you for signing off on that. I think the business definitely appreciates the urgency behind that. So, anybody have any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Council Sims?
Is this for wine tasting, or is there going to be bar in your?
It is for wine sales, and I assume some wine tasting as well.
Okay, that's what I kind of thought, okay.
Anybody else? Council Or.
I just want to make a motion to approve the permit as presented.
I think the motion would be, what would the motion be? Basically, that council approves the OLCC permit request.
And make a motion that council approve the permit request.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded to council approve the OLCC permit request. Any further discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, go ahead, Council McDonald.
I'm in favor of approving this. I just want to point out something that bugged me from a couple of meetings ago. We were approached by one of the marijuana dispensaries to extend their open hours, and we kind of hemmed and hawed and took our time making that decision, and I still feel like they were treated kind of unfairly in that decision. I don't really see reasoning behind treating a marijuana dispensary any different than anybody that's going to sell alcohol. I've stated this before, I think expediting this decision while we kind of drug our feet on the other one is not real fair. Again, I don't have any objection to this particular permit. I just want to point out that if I was that business owner who was trying to conduct legal business in Oregon, and I was treated differently than someone else, I would feel kind of definitely miffed on that. So, that's all I wanted to point out, but I'm definitely okay with approving this license.
Okay, so noted, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the motion. Any further discussion? Halls in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Move on to the next item of discussion, which is discussion of neighborhood improvement grant. Julia?
Thank you. So, if you recall, actually, one of your, one of the council goals was to move forward with the neighborhood improvement or community improvement funding of some sort. In the budget process, we allocated $40,000 under the council umbrella towards a neighborhood improvement grant. At the time, we said that we were going to come back to council with the framework of that for council, since it's your funding and your decision for you guys to endorse. We have historically had a community improvement grant and funding. The $40,000 is more than council has ever allocated. It was in 2018, it was $10,000; in 2020, it was $30,000, and then COVID, and it stopped. So, there is a framework for that generally. I did make some basic modifications to the grant, but for the most part, kept it similar to what had been done before. So, if you wanted to just reopen that grant process, council could, or you could make modifications as you see fit. So, some questions that I had for council to consider is just, is the grant funding range that was originally proposed between $1,000 and $5,000, is that still appropriate? Do you want to include commercial businesses or just residents? Do you want to expand or reduce what can be funded with the grant? And then I also just wanted to point out that the timing is pretty tight because we're already in February, and this is for this fiscal year, which ends June 30th. So, if we're going to go forward with this, we probably need to get something done fairly quickly. So, some other things to consider is not moving forward with this this year, but start continuing to work on the direction of what we want to do, and then have a bigger and earlier push so that we have more of a year to get something out, or potentially spending the funds on other community type of projects or events at your discretion. So, lots to discuss.
Okay, thank you. This is an opportunity for a public comment on this particular agenda item. Anyone have any thoughts, questions, concerns? None? Okay. Council, discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Council Sims?
So, you're asking about the range of $1,000 to $5,000, Julia? Seems like we could do, I mean, have that on the application, but I mean, make it discretionary with the council, you know, if there was some project that might go a little above that, but that's my thought on it. And as far as commercial businesses, I would like to see them included, just because I would like to entice some businesses to do some murals in town. I think that would really spice up the town. As far as expansion or what we can fund, I think that should be, you know, up to a council vote, something like that, you know, if something came up, and my thoughts on it.
So, keep in mind that we want to provide guidance to people on what types of things you guys are going to fund, so we could certainly be less specific, if that's what you're getting at, and so that gives you guys more discretion to make some decisions. I wouldn't want to say, here's what types of things we fund, but submit anything you want, and council will choose. We want to give them some parameters, but.
Mr. Mayor?
Council Julia?
Yeah, I think, I think I have a lot, some thoughts along the same lines as I think Councilor Sims. I would like to see, and maybe it's just wording or adding another category, but I'd like to be able to see business owners be able to apply. I would like it to maybe not have like a, say, $5,000, but maybe $7,500 or something, but I think providing some flexibility as a range of events. I also do want to provide language in here that's going to allow existing organizations. I mean, I think it is in here, and I think they could apply under these guidelines, but I do want to see, make it seem very easy for an existing organization like RDS or the Chamber to be able to apply for some grant funding through this as well. I think that's the heart behind having a process like this, that we can fund projects we just think are going to be really beneficial to the overall city, that might come from individuals or businesses or some of these organizations that have really done a fantastic job in our community. So, yeah, but I just think, it just feels like it needs to be a little broader, and maybe not completely broad where you're just like completely, but yeah, I would be in agreement with something along the lines of what Councilor Sims was saying.
Mr. Council Patty? Yeah, thanks. So, kind of going on this, I just wanted to ask a quick clarifying question. The $1,000 to $5,000 range, is that what we did last time, or is that a little bit larger?
My understanding is that's what we did last time.
Yeah, whatever is here. I think whatever is here is what we did last time, because the amount budgeted was a lot less.
Yeah, that makes sense. And then, okay. I think at least an individual counselor standpoint, I'm okay with the commercial business as well. My question for staff is, okay, say, say we do this, and we don't get requests that meet $40,000 or are in excess of it. Does that money then return back into the budget, and then can that be spent on some of these other things, like the lights idea, for the lights walk and stuff like that, or what would that look like?
So, the budget authorization, I mean, your budget is a little different, but basically we've allocated $40,000 towards this. So, if you, if it's not spent, it just goes back into the beginning fund balance, and we move forward with that. If it is spent partially, same thing, but you can, I guess if we get to June 15th, and we haven't spent all of the money, then, and you want to spend the rest of it on something else, you could potentially do that before the end of June.
Do you think?
Is that what you're getting at?
Yeah, kind of, but would that be enough time to then spend it on the idea I thought I saw on our packet about the lights walk and everything? Or would that not be sufficient time?
Yeah, we would, I mean, I don't know. I mean, I, we could, we will know by May. Essentially, if we're going to go forward with this this year and try to launch this, the idea is that we need to announce it in, as soon as we can. I said March, April, but we probably could get it started sooner, but we want to get it out in the utility bills and get information out within April 1st deadline, and then depending on how many we get, well, regardless of how many we get, we'd need to have some council review. So, council would make the decision by May 1st, and that would really give people May and June to spend the money or commit the money. So, we would know by May, when you've allocated the money or not allocated the money, what we have left or not, and then we would be able to spend the money and purchase lights or whatever else council wanted to spend it on.
Thank you, Julia. Super helpful.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Council Julia.
Yeah, just kind of struggling back around to that, just that funding requirement section, I think that's under the, I think you alluded to that timeline would probably change a little bit. Yeah, I like the funding decisions being made closer to May, just because it does feel like March 18th would be really close, and then.
I don't know where that came from, honestly. Sorry.
No worries, no worries at all. I think, yeah, it might have just been.
From leftover.
From the last one. And I do think maybe potentially having the money, having the requirement of the grant being like committed by June 30. I do know that might be a pretty tight turnaround for organizations to get it all spent by June 30, but that's, that would be the only other thing. Maybe having it like committed and distributed to those businesses or organizations or groups with, but maybe not necessarily having a requirement that it has to be spent by that.
And if it's okay, can I ask David Gilio, James? Can I ask James to come up and see if he can speak to that of whether or not, if we allocate the funds, is there an issue with the people that we send the money, give the money to or allocate the money to, spending it?
Yeah, I guess that's the clarification I would want, is are we paying the company that's doing the thing, or are we paying the neighborhood?
I think we would be giving them money to do what they have requested to do.
Then, then we could give them the money when it's allocated, and it doesn't have to be spent by them, as long as we've paid them with an idea that they would be doing a certain thing, that's fine.
Okay.
Great. But if it's the city that's paying for the good or service, that good or service needs to be received or completed by June 30th.
Okay, that's good.
Mr. Mayor?
Council Or.
What kind of, I don't know, follow-up or safeguards or things do we have in place? Are we going to put in place to make sure that the money is spent how the group or business says that it's going to be spent?
That's my question. Great question.
Yeah, and I certainly, my thought would be that they would, it would be more of a reimbursement type of thing, or they would need to give us some justification that they spent it. At the very least, some reporting requirements so that we can say, yes, it's done and report it back. I guess I need to get a little bit better thought about what hammer we have if they, if we give them the money and they don't do it, but we've given them the money. So, I think, I don't know if last time it was a reimbursement, I think it was a reimbursement situation last time, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Council Or.
I could see it as like either the reimbursement, they spend the money and then we reimburse, or if we were, I don't know, your mural idea, if it was, the money was given to a company that is going to be doing the work but doesn't, hasn't yet done the work, but it's going to, you know, reputable company that we can fall back on. I think, I think, and this was pre-COVID, so it's like a lifetime ago, but I think that maybe some of the groups submitted like quotes. Yes, okay. To us that we then reimbursed, and I see Lance is popping on, so maybe he has more memory than I do.
Yeah, if I may. The previous grants program is basically the city organized it, but it was run with Dan Fleishman, and so Dan Fleishman would run the grants, and then when the folks came in for reimbursement, Dan would go out and inspect the work to make sure it was done according to what they said it would, and once he signed off, that's when the reimbursement took place.
Great, thanks.
And that is something to think about. I mean, I guess I would just, I don't have all the answers, but I would offer that reimbursement may make it challenging for some groups and organizations who were really trying to get to do this, to do it. If we're saying, hey, have a neighborhood party, rent a dumpster and some lawn equipment to do something, that just might, it might hinder people from doing what they can't do because they don't have the money upfront to do it, but then you do run the risk of, you know, you have to make sure that you can actually hold it accountable. So, I think, oh, it sounds like Lance has some.
Well, I misspoke when I said reimbursement. I don't think it was a reimbursement program before, but Dan would follow the projects, and he would go out and do inspections throughout to make sure the work was done according to what they said it would be, and then he'd add the final sign-off on that.
Okay, thanks. Council McDonald?
Yeah, thanks. I think we want to go through, what I would suggest would be to increase the top end of the range for the projects to maybe $10,000, especially for trying to get these projects in and done as soon as possible with a limited timeframe. I really want to tap into the kind of the creativity and the, some of the bigger projects that may be out there, so I think, you know, bumping that limit up is going to help do that, get that money spent on some significant projects and out the door. So, that would be my only suggestion is to say, okay, we're going to go with a $10,000 limit and get four or five good-sized projects, and go from there. I think that'll help speed the process.
Okay. I think it's important that we recognize the spirit of this initiative, and to that, I'm going to read the paragraph, how it was designed. "This initiative is designed to help neighborhoods address neighborhood issues and to support nonprofit organizations that provide services to state and residents. The grant program is intended to fund items such as landscape improvements, neighborhood cleanup parties, installation of benches, or other improvements that might address a neighborhood concern." So, I think that's important, keep in mind.
Mr. Mayor?
Council Julia?
Well, I recognize that that was the intention, and I do, I think I would support kind of a broadening of that intention to include things that would also just encourage economic development more generally, and I think this is, and I know that when we had these conversations, the word neighborhood improvement grant and community improvement grant, those are kind of things that we were kind of thinking about, was it going to be under the same bucket? Are we going to look at both individually? But, yeah, I would have no issue with someone who comes to us and makes an argument or makes a grant, a request that is just arguing the economic, you know, the way that it produces economic development for the community.
I don't have a problem with that per se. I guess from my recollection and how it happened in the past is that we had people from all over the region coming to us and asking, I want the money to stay here in Stateon.
I think that's important, too, yeah.
Sure. We had people from Mill City coming to us, we had people from CIO, because it was basically free money, and there was no way to really have accountability for that. So, I'd like to see, whatever you guys decide to do, keep that in mind and keep that so it focuses on our community.
Mayor Quigley?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Hey, Council G, I was just wondering about that, as far as the broadening of it. Could you give me an example of economic development, like proposal that you envision coming forward if we were to broaden it, so I could understand kind of what you're getting at with an example here?
Yeah, I think what I think of is, are there maybe, like, let's say, Chamber or RDS, these are the two organizations that I think of, are ways that they can use this grant opportunity as well? I think that's what I'm thinking of. So, whether that's events that they want to have in a certain area, or educational opportunities that promote, you know, economic development, things like that, those are the things that I'm wondering if we want to include in this grant opportunity. And I know that was initially like something we had talked about was because we were individually, we'd have different organizations kind of individually coming and making requests, and wanting to just say, okay, no, we have this more general grant process that everyone goes through, that's more general, and everyone's held to the same standard and those type of things, which I think helps prevent, you know, just, I think provides transparency and, yeah, I think that's the best I can answer that, I guess. I don't know if that answers it sufficiently, if you have any more things maybe that I said that make more questions.
Yeah, for me, I think to see something like that go forward, I would want a little bit more detail on what that broadening looks like, like what kind of education are we providing, and how does it benefit state and residents? Like, if it's being administered by those two example organizations you gave, I'd want to know how the intent of this grant program is achieved in that. And so, for me, before we broaden, I want to be really, I just want to understand as an individual policymaker, what we're doing and what we're allowing our money to be spent on. And to me, this intent for now seems good, but if there's something that we need to broaden out, I'm open to that conversation. I just want to know what it looks like, if that makes sense.
Council Or.
Mr. Mayor, to Council Patty's point, I think if we did broaden it out, it gives us the opportunity to see what, what community members are thinking of when they think of how this money could be spent, and it doesn't necessarily, like, if we look at that and say, you know what, that's not, you know, where we want to go with this this time, but it could open up a discussion, and maybe a later date, even if we decide not to fund that project, it still gives us the opportunity to see what that is. It might not even be something, you know, you might be going in that direction of economic development, but someone who hears that might say, like, it might spark something in them that's totally different than the way Council Julia was even thinking about it. So, I could see it just giving the opportunity if we increase it. I do want to say that for the intent of, like, I would love to see the groups, like we had the Sylvan Springs group come through, and they cleared the paths, and we did have like the West Town residents fix up their, the walls along their houses. So, I'm really, I see both sides of it, like, I want to see the businesses be able and the groups to be able to use this, but also like fund these little projects that, you know, if only I had, you know, this much money, what would I do for, you know, for this area that we live in? So, I want to make sure that we leave space for that, even if we broaden it out.
Makes sense. The oversight resides within the council, right? The councils want to kind of review it and make the determination, so I'm okay with that. I do think that Council McDonald's on to something, though. I think his recommendation about increasing the limits, maybe have bigger rewards maybe is a possibility, might be something for the council to consider, depending on the size of the project and the scope of what they end up being. I think to your point that, you know, maybe there is something out there that's $10,000 and.
Yeah, I just think that, I mean, there's only the handful of us up here, and I know that there's something, I know somebody's got something in their head that we would have never thought of, and, you know, upping those limits and opening it up and broadening it, as we say, just gives us more opportunity for those to come see, oh, I would have never thought of that, that's a great idea, when, you know, I don't know every inch and corner of this town, to know what everybody in every different neighborhood and community needs. So, the more we broaden that up, the more we can say, the more we will see those ideas that we would have never thought of before.
Okay, thank you. Council Or.
Also, we have an amazing community of people who match, like with the, again, with the Sylvan Springs area, they matched money, and then also in-kind donations, and so being able to expand this, to make it, to up the limit can increase those opportunities to have those matching funds from community partners.
Very much. So, what's the council's thoughts on doing it this year or waiting to next year, as Julia outlined in here?
I for one kind of want to see it go forward this year, if I'm being honest, see what we can do with it.
Council Sims?
I would also like to see it go forward. I think it's going to be a tight deadline, but it would be nice to see some projects happen this spring.
Mr. Mayor?
Council Julia?
Because I would agree with that as well, but I would want to say, I do like the idea of having the deadline be like far enough before June so that if, June 30th, so that we would still have time if we did not have enough applications approved, grants approved, that we still have that remainder money. that we still have that remainder money for this budget cycle that we could use towards Christmas lights or something like that, if we don't have enough grant applications to fund. So I kind of like having, yes, do it this year, but also if we can get it, get the decision before, you know, June 1, that might give us enough time to still utilize the rest of that remainder of that budget if there's not enough grants that come through.
And I think increasing it, increasing the amount may actually make it easier to get the money out quicker because you, we might have some, some good projects. So I'll, I'll play with the, the dates and do what I, what I can. So I think I heard, increase the range to 10,000 and general support for adding commercial businesses to the mix. And then, which I guess in turn goes to expanding what can be funded. So I think if businesses, it's really kind of the, I guess, right now, it's kind of saying landscape improvements, neighborhood cleanup parties, installation of benches, or other improvements that might address neighborhood concerns. I feel like that's broad. Is there, do you want to say it more broadly? Or is that sufficiently? Okay. So then I'll ask you, I'll ask you to turn to page 14 and 15 of your packet, which is the actual application. This, I, I don't think I made any changes to. In fact, I know I didn't. But since you guys will be the ones that will have to be making the decisions, is there anything specific that you want to be asked in here that will help you? So right now, we're asking some basic contact information, project description, project budget, if there's a cash match, in-kind donation, who's going to be managing it, and then the scope of work. Is there anything more that you're going to want to kind of factor in, in order to help you make the decision if you've got 10 projects and only enough for five, you know?
Councilor McDonald?
Mr. Mayor, maybe, maybe just a section on, on, you know, what value do you think this brings to the community?
Okay.
Whether that be economic or beautification or whatever, just to kind of, there's a project description here, but there's not like, okay, how is this going to benefit Staton as a whole?
Okay.
Councilor Patty?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm kind of looking at the application in general. And it, it doesn't really say, like, it doesn't quantify, like numerically, how many lots or how many people is going to benefit, or how many people are impacted by this. Maybe more on that specifically.
Anybody else? Is there enough information, Julia?
I think so.
Is council done with that discussion? If so, we will move on to the next item, which is Resolution Number 1090. Adopt, it was just informational, right?
Yes.
Sorry. With that, we'll move on to Resolution Number 1090, adoption of utility rate study, recommendations for water, wastewater, and stormwater for fiscal years 2024 through 25 through 2028, 29.
Yes.
Julia?
Thank you. So this is something that we, we've actually been talking about for well over a year, the utility rate study. And we really haven't made a lot of changes to the water, wastewater, and storm. We did identify that we were going to take streets and the street fee discussion off and have a separate conversation. But for the most part, there was an understanding of what was going into the white water, wastewater, and stormwater fees. What FCS Group has done, I think since the last time that you saw everything publicly, was that they, for storm, or for sewer and water, they, they categorized the rates into use classifications. So understanding that different users use the, the infrastructure differently. So the, the rates and the rate changes are going to be different depending on whether or not it's residential or non-residential, for example. And so that is in your resolution that kind of, that outlines the different planned rate changes by category for water. And then it lists what the, for, for single family, or not for single family, for water, it lists what the changes will actually be by the different meter sizes and volumes. And then we have sewer, which has been changed to be residential, non-residential. And then, as you recall, sublimity is being addressed through a separate contract. And that's one of the reasons actually why we haven't brought this to you yet, is that we were really still working through the sublimity contract. We still are working through the sublimity contract, but we are, we are very, very close to being done. And we'll be bringing something to council for consideration at a later date. But it's enough that we felt like the changes weren't going to be, you know, massively significant. If anything, the rates will, the rate increases will be less, they won't be more. And so we felt comfortable bringing that to council. And as we're getting ready to prepare for our budgets, it's just helpful for us to have an idea of, of where council support lies on these rate changes from year to year, but especially for the next year. And then stormwater hasn't changed and doesn't vary by classification because stormwater is stormwater. So what we're asking for council to do is accept the utility rate study and the, the, the rate changes that are projected by our consultants. It's really, it's not binding you to this per se, because ultimately the adoption of the fee schedule is where you will make the, the formal decisions on rates on an annual basis. But it helps us plan and it helps set the stage for kind of what to expect and how to go forward. So with that, happy to answer any questions. And James and Lance are here as well, if you have any specific questions.
Thanks, Julia. I do have one comment. I know that Mayor Kingsbury requested we have a joint meeting between councils. And I think we're going to discuss this item. Is there any movement on that?
No.
Okay. Is it prudent for us to hold that meeting before we address this?
I don't think it's necessary. This is, again, it's not set in stone. And the rates to Staton aren't going to change significantly at this point, one way or the other.
Okay. All right. With that, that's another opportunity for a public comment. Does anybody have any desire to talk about Resolution 1090? Terry, come on. Please state your name and address and hit that little button there and light turns green, you're good to go.
Hi, my name's Terry Mesa. I'm in Staton, Oregon. I didn't know this was going to be on the agenda tonight. But just speaking as a business owner who pays for water bills, there's quite a disparity between, and I'm not sure how the utilities get charged, but for instance, one of our addresses, the newest one, the 505 Collective, we literally maybe flush our toilet twice a day and we pay $156 a month in utilities. Our other building just went up to almost $300 a month. So between four buildings, we pay almost $800 a month for utilities, which is quite a bit. And I don't know if you guys want to, you know, take that into consideration when you're looking at charges and how they are, they are assessed. But it's a lot of money.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Council discussion? Councilor Sims, got something to say?
Yes, I think this question is probably for Lance, but reading through this, this was a tough read, by the way, today. The stormwater utilities is one I was kind of focusing on because there's a 40% increase in 24 and a 40% increase in 25. And I'm trying to, it looks like it's going for capital funding. Is that where most of this increase is, is going towards for, for this large of a percentage increase?
Right. Steve, I know you're an engineer, so I'll just say percentages don't really necessarily tell the whole story. I don't have the document in front of me, but we're really only talking about a $4 increase or something very similar to that. It's just that we haven't charged very much in the past, which is why our storm fund is so lacking that we can't, we can't do infrastructure projects at all because we don't have the money to do any. You know, we talked about streets. We're going to be talking about streets in the future. But I know, we all know on the council, that there are a lot of streets that we can't do any work to because it need, they're in need of so much stormwater infrastructure also. Our fund, our current funding levels for stormwater will not pay for those improvements. And so I think, and I don't have the document in front of me, so I apologize. But I think Julia or James probably do have it there. But the increases are very, they're minimal. I mean, 40% sounds like a lot when we're talking percentages, but when you're talking about the actual whole dollar amount, it's not very much.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll chime in on that. So, and just to clarify, the 2024 is actually current year, I believe. Nope, I'm wrong. I'm sorry. I, that's not correct. Currently, stormwater is for a single-family dwelling, 645, and it would go up to 903. So less than $3, you know, about 250 is what 40% increase is. So, yeah.
Right, yeah, I see it. I just wondered why the, such a large jump. But obviously, we're trying to put some money into the stormwater for roads.
Right. Yeah, the stormwater just has been more than others underfunded for the projects that are necessary.
Yeah, you have to remember, we just started charging the stormwater fee, I believe it was in 2015. We never had a stormwater fund before. And so that's why the improvements have fallen behind so much, is because we never did have a stormwater fund. And then when the memo of understanding with the San Diego Water Control District was signed, we agreed to create SDCs for the stormwater. And we agreed to create a stormwater fee. And that happened, I think, 2000, late 2014, early 2015. So we've really only had a stormwater fund in place for eight years, nine years, eight and a half years now, or just starting 2024. We haven't had enough time to build up any capital. Once we did build some capital up, we had to pay $230,000 of that, that money to the San Diego Water Control District because we agreed for, to do, give them some money for gate improvements for their Salem ditch. And so we had to borrow that. We didn't have enough money to pay them. So we had to borrow it from the sewer fund to pay them that $230,000. So we've been behind the eight ball since 2015, I'm afraid to say. And long story short, that, that's why the, you see the 40% increase. But again, that's, that's only like $4, $4.50. I know, I don't want it to seem like it's insignificant because, you know, $4 is significant to a lot of folks. But that, that's what we're talking about.
Thanks, Lance. Yeah, that was really helpful.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilor Gillio?
Yeah, just on that, and, and these are the same, I believe it's the same numbers. And I remember going through this in, I think it was in the summer with, yeah, with, for the FCS.
FCS Group.
Yeah, FCS Group. Yeah, and I was just remembering all that stuff. I'm, and I kind of doubt this to be the case. But, and I know that in some ways we were kind of adding that to just add an extra buffer. But I didn't know, Lance, if, if some of the, because I know we added that $200,000 or $300,000 from the ARPA funding into the, into the stormwater fund as well. And so just kind of wondering if that potentially has impacted just the overall health of that fund?
Well, what it has done is, I, I think I showed Councilor Ork this. She, she pulled me out one day or we were talking on the roads and we were, we were talking about the Ida Street improvements. And the Ida Street improvements, I showed her how, and see how bad they are right now for storm drainage. We have catch basins that sit two feet from the curb. They're higher than the road where we have a lot of flooding right downtown, Third and Ida Street. I showed her that intersection. So we'll be using most of that $300,000 for Ida Street stormwater improvements. And whatever improvement, whatever money we have left over for that, will go towards another street. When we do a street, we'll be putting new stormwater infrastructure in. Because most streets in Staton that aren't new within the last, you know, 15 years, they all need stormwater improvements, whether that is pushing up, putting a catch basin closer to the curb so it actually catches stormwater, or if it's actually putting new stormwater in, or water quality manholes, or storm manholes to connect all these, this infrastructure together. So we'll be using that. And so your end result, it helps the fund because we're not having to spend money that we budgeted, put in the budget already. So it replaces that and it allows us to do more work.
Thank you. One thing, just generally on all these numbers, I really do want to highlight for, maybe for the folks watching and just remind us as a council, is that the estimates in terms of how much we're increasing outside of stormwater when it comes to water, sewer, is much less than what had initially been proposed back in over the summer, where I think we were at like a 6.25 increase every year, kind of for this foreseeable future, to the point where I think the five-year projections cumulatively, when you look at these three funds together, like what you would be paying in five years, under this proposal is about $30 less than where we would be with what they proposed even over, over the summer. And that's, I think, primarily because of shifting it between users. So like the city is paying a lot more for our water, water usage and factoring in sublimities, paying for, for theirs as well. So I do want to highlight that, that I, I overall was very encouraged by these numbers, just because I remember looking over the summer and seeing where, what these increases were. And what they are now is even lower than I think the projected CPI is. It does factor in CPI and all that, but it's actually, I mean, it's a lot of years, it's, you know, one point, especially for single-family and multifamily, you know, 1% to 2% most years. And then there are some categories where I think non-residential users pay more. I know, but there's others where they're, they're paying less. So it, overall, I think for everyone is better than what the, except for I think maybe, what is, what's the, it's a...
Irrigation.
Irrigation, yeah. Irrigation, I think is paying more. But I think outside of irrigation users, every other category, except for the city and irrigation, seem to be paying more. So I just want to highlight that as, as was, as it was encouraging to me.
Councilor Gillio, thanks for that reminder. I do remember that now, that you brought that up. And I think it's important to share that with everybody. It was significantly higher before you guys worked with staff to bring it back down. So a good reminder and good, good discussion. Councilor Sims?
And one more for Lance. So we have a MOU with the San Diego Water Control District. So are some of this capital improvement funding, is this going to meet our requirements for stormwater with them? I'm trying to remember. I know it's some of the catch basins were draining into their irrigation ditches, but will this meet that MOU?
Since I've started here each year, except for maybe three, it's going to be nine years coming up next week. I think for the five or six years of each year of the nine, we have put pollution control manholes in upstream of the outfalls into their ditch. We've also spent $2.7 million on a regional detention facility. We had $1.5 million of that that was granted, or granted to us by the state lottery funds. So the cities spent $1.2 million of their own money for that regional detention facility, which was a big ask of the, in the memo of understanding. And we continue to look for ways to meet that memo of understanding. One thing I'll point out, I think I was there last, last meeting and we, the city council approved the stormwater master plan. I won't go through all of that, but I believe I spelled out what we need to do. We need to set those pgeometers in the ground to establish groundwater so we can create a stormwater master plan that's feasible for detention facilities. And once we do that, we can determine where to put detention facilities. And that in itself will reduce stormwater into their system. We met with Brent of the Water Control District today. I outlined those steps to him. I, he understands those steps and I think he's on board with those steps. But it's not going to happen overnight, Councilor. It's, it's going to take, you know, you know, at least a year and a half. know, at least a year and a half to get that master plan done. And once we're done with that, we can talk, sit down and talk about ways to reduce stormwater into the Water Control District's ditches.
Yeah, that's definitely good news. I think that'll go a long ways when we negotiate with the San Diego Water Control District. That's good, good to hear that, that Brent's on board with it.
Well, I, I think he is. Julia spent more time with him than I, so she may be able to add to that, but I, he understands. I will say that, he understands the position we're in and what we're trying to do to make sure the new master plan, stormwater master plan, is something, it's a working document, and it's feasible, what's on there. And then it's a matter of finding funds to build these, these detention facilities where we show them.
I'll add that the, the numbers that went into the utility rate study are based on current operation numbers, projected operation numbers, and capital projects that are based on master plans. And so, you know, when you ask, will it meet the needs? It will meet the needs based on what we have information on today. As we update master plans, we'll need to look at utility, I mean, this isn't a static thing. We're not going to wait five years and then do this again. We'll probably look at this in a few years and make sure that we don't have changes. So, it's, it's sufficient for what we know that we need at this moment in time.
Yeah, that's a good point, Julia. If I may, just add one brief statement on that. She's absolutely correct. When we started the utility rate study, we came up with a capital improvement plan based on our master plans. Master plan projects, capital improvement plans that our consultants identified for us that are the most priority for us. As you'll see in the sewer master plan, and the sewer rates, they're, they're created, the sewer rates were created so we can fund, like the Ida Street Sewer, sanitary sewer upsizing projects, things like that. And the street improvements, the, the capital of street improvements, we'll talk about in dates to come. But the stormwater master plan was so outdated, we didn't put any, any projects into that, from that master plan because of the, the growth rate we had at the time, 3.3%. It projected huge growth in, in many projects that we may not have to do. So, we didn't want to put those dollars into the utility rate study and have this arbitrary number for rate increases when we don't know it's accurate. So, what we decided to do with that was wait for this new master plan to be done, and then look at those rates to see what we need to meet the needs of the master plan. And we know the master plan document will be accurate, and then we can make some accurate projections on what we need to build those projects out.
Anybody else?
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Julia.
Yeah, one other thing was, I'm wondering if there are any changes to the way, like water and sewer usage is calculated. Just, I'm not entirely familiar with how it was calculated before, but I'm just noticing the, just the, the base fee, the base fee and how just the meter charges all work together. Are there any just significant changes to any of that methodology? I know that there seems to be significant changes in terms of increase based on type of user, like residential, non-residential, multifamily, single-family, et cetera. But I'm wondering if there are any significant changes kind of based, and maybe this is a question for the FCS group, but like based on amount, you know, like a meter charge, things like that. Any other like?
So, I'll try, and then James or Lance can correct me if I'm wrong. But for water, for example, there was no change, no, I mean, it was across the board, changes based on meter size, fire line standby. Where you see the difference by class is the volume charges, and so that's where you're going to see the differences. So, for example, non-residential is, is less than single-family over time, whereas the city goes from 155 to 195. So, there's going to need to be different. Through our billing system, it will require some differences, but really in the vol, the usage, the volume of usage. And then I believe that for sewer, everything was just, just looking at this, this is just the residential rate. So, there will be differences based on the, so these rates will change based on the percentage, but what went into the percentages, it's just volume, right? Monthly use versus base dwelling unit. So, no, I guess the answer is no, there isn't a major difference other than differentiating the percentages by user.
All right. Thank you.
What counsel like to do? Counselor McDonald?
I'm over that we approve Resolution 1090 as presented.
I'll second.
It's been moved and second to approve Resolution 1090 as presented. Any further discussion? And I'll just make clarification. So, the rate actual schedule will be coming up when? After the budget?
No, actually, we're planning on doing that well before the budget. We're actually hoping to get the fee schedule updates in March, I believe, so that then as we're preparing the budget, we know what council has decided to do. So, that will be coming back to you with, with all the, the rates and fees that are proposed in March.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Julia.
And just for clarification, this is like a, is, is it in terms of a schedule, there, there may be some tweaks and things like that incoming years? So, you know, there, you know, CSI is different or things like that. There can be different tweaks along the way.
Right, right. This, so, for next year, I feel like we're probably fairly locked in. I don't see significant changes in, for next year. But as we go forward, there could be changes that will, that will need to be factored in, and, but obviously that would be discussed with council at that time.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else? Okay. All those in favor of Resolution Number 1090? Do I have to call the counsel on this one?
No, it's a resolution.
Correct. Thank you. In favor of Resolution Number 1090, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. That leaves us, the next item, it was communication from city staff. Julia?
So, bear with me, I've got a number. So, first, I just wanted to, I guess, speak to-
Mr. Mayor, don't we have more general business on smack, or was that going to-
I'm going to cover that after this one. Counselor?
I just wanted to speak to Counselor McDonald's comments about the OLCC permit, and just clarify that we have a process already in place for the OLCC permits, and it's actually not a very well, it's, it's more this is the way we've always done it process. And so, which is different than when the gentleman came and asked for extending the hours, that would require a code amendment. So, I just want to make it clear that, just because when people say we treat people differently or different circumstances, that was a different request and a different ask. This was something that historically has gone to council, just because that's the way we always did it, but there wasn't any written rule that said we specifically do that. And so, that, I just wanted to make that clear. State of the City. So, we're, I think you've, I've mentioned this in the weekly updates, but we have scheduled a State of the City address, the first in many years, as far as I know, if ever, for, it's going to be March 4th, and the plan is that it will be, actually instead of a work session, we'll have it here, invite the public, and we'll have some specific targeted invitations as well. The mayor's going to do this grand show. I think he's got a dance planned. Sorry.
Song.
Song, absolutely. And then we'll have, you know, so he'll kind of share what we've done, look forward a little bit, and then we'll have a very brief reception intermission, and then go into the council meeting. So, excited about that. And then, actually, at the next meeting, our hope is that we're going to be doing student recognitions of students at Stateon High School that received 4.0 or higher, I guess. And we even shocked the principal, and there's 123 students at Stateon High School that got 4.0s this past semester, which is fantastic. She was like, are you sure you want to recognize them all? I don't know that we'll have that many people show up, but that's really fantastic. So, that was really exciting. And that's just Stateon High, not Regis. I haven't heard from Regis yet. So, so hopefully we'll have a good number of people in the audience next, next meeting. I numbered my things. Oh, I just wanted to follow up a little bit on conversation at the last meeting, and Counselor Gilian, or, Gilio and I were talking this afternoon regarding the street discussion, and I just wanted to let you know that we're continuing conversations. We met again today internally with, with staff, and we're working on some educational components. We're working with the consultants on some different scenarios for improvements, and trying to develop some criteria for evaluating that aren't simply technical, that are, I think, getting at what you guys were speaking to at the last meeting, to help evaluate, of all the bad roads, how do we choose which two or one gets done? And so, we're working on that, and I'll be talking with you in your one-on-ones, and then, once it's a little bit more fleshed out, we'll bring this to council and share it with the council, get your input, and then the public as well. So, I just wanted to let you guys know that we're working on that. Okay, that goes into crosswalks, and I'll invite Chief Johns to come up, because she'll segue into PD updates here in a second. But I know that there's been a lot of discussion on social media, but then also at prior council meetings about crossing a first. And we are planning on doing some additional educational outreach for the community. And then I think I forwarded to you, and I don't know if you had a chance to look at it, I sent an email to the county last week asking them, just sort of indicating that we had gotten a lot of comments and concerns about that, and asking them to do some study of, of first as an, you know, not just one intersection, but first as a whole. I actually didn't expect to get a rapid response, or as thorough a response as I got. But basically, they said that they, they will do a study, and they're going to start by looking at the locations I noted, asked if there were any behavior patterns that they'd like us to look out for in addition to what I had noted. I'll read you what I had noted, just for your reference. I'll just read you the email that I sent him. "I'm reaching out to you because the city has been getting a number of comments expressing concern about pedestrian safety crossing first. This has come in the form of comments at council meetings, comments to and from counselors, and comments on social media. There are several locations that are noted, Fern and Cedar across from Safeway, Locust near the high school and elementary school, Washington, and at Marion, the crosswalk where the library is. The police are enhancing patrols and enforcement. However, given the problem is at multiple intersections, they have found that they may be watching one crosswalk and then getting reports after the fact at a crosswalk further down. We will be initiating a bigger public awareness campaign in addition to the enforcement, but I think there are also some structural or engineering issues that are impacting the issue. I would like to see if the county can work on a study to determine if slower speeds, improved lighting, enhanced pedestrian crossing, such as bullbacks, or something where people can be seen better and is a visual cue for vehicles, enhanced striping and signage, and potentially pedestrian-activated signage is warranted. Assuming some or all of the above are warranted, I'd like to see if we can have conversations about how we can prioritize and implement an improvement project." So, that's what I sent out on last week, Friday, and got a response this morning from the county, basically saying that they will do a study. It will likely take two to three months. They will place traffic cameras at the location stated over a 48-hour period. When the weather is nice, the traffic team will then review the footage and note pedestrian crossing times and locations, at which point he will review with, with them, and take a look at vehicle speeds on the corridor. So, just wanted to let you know that we're moving forward with that. Did you have a-
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Yeah, just concerning that, the one other thing that I was curious about was, is particularly on first, was if they could take a look at, just because I feel like a big problem is that turns, like the lack of the turn signal. I know that there's been a little back and forth of the county on that, but that lack of the turn signal on Washington and first, I feel like that is causing some issues. Wondering if that can be factored in. And then the other question I would have is, as long as they're there doing the study, wondering if we could have a look. I know it's not on first, but to me, the, the one that really always stands out to me is the, and this is a line of side issue, there's a lot of things on this one, but it's the, the intersection of Third and, and Fern, Third and Fern.
So, I, yeah, I will follow up with council later and separately, and maybe have, we, we did a study, we've got some information. I haven't had a chance to thoroughly review it. I know Lance has looked at it in detail, and I think that's something that we can talk to council about in the, in the future.
Okay, great.
So, if there aren't any questions or comments on that, I'm going to segue Chief Johns into just talking about what they're doing with crosswalks. If you want her to speak to an incident, an incident that was posted on Facebook, she's prepared to, but we also don't have to, and then give PD update.
All right. Thank you. Yeah, so, traffic safety and traffic enforcement is ever an ongoing concern and feedback from the community. I would say crosswalks is a little new and different recently, with some comments at council, some social media, and then just some feedback in general. But I would say daily and weekly, we get feedback from the community, requests for patrols in certain areas, concerns about speed, concerns about a lot of different traffic safety. So, that is ever-present on our mind in, in our enforcement. With the crosswalks, and specifically the requests for enhanced patrols at First and Washington, we have given that additional feedback in regards to what Julia was noting is, we had a sergeant spending some pretty extended time at First and Washington, and lo and behold, we get a complaint later that a separate location was problematic. So, we are trying to be present. We are looking at that enforcement. We have partnered with community engagement officer, Christian, in putting together some press releases and education to just enhance and ask people to pay attention to that. Our downtown area, a daily enforcement with our yellow curbs, the reason the yellow curbs right next to the crosswalks are for pedestrian visibility and safety, and that is ever an ongoing battle of keeping people not parking in the yellow zone. So, just this morning, I stopped and talked to a lady and reminded her of the significance of the yellow curb and keeping our pedestrians safe. We do get safety grants through state and federal monies that we can put officers out specific, only on traffic enforcement. So, I know this morning specifically, we had an officer out for multiple hours. That was his one and only assignment. He was not taking calls for service. It was simply traffic enforcement. Those grants are specific to a few things. So, we get money for seatbelt enforcement, distracted driving, which we know is a significant problem with behind crashes, speed enforcement as well as impaired driving. So, those are very helpful to get that grant money. We would also always encourage, and we do get a fair amount of citizens that call in and report concerns about specific areas, and/or report specific incidents where they report a driver, a location, and a plate. People can make those reports to our non-emergency and talk to dispatch. We have people that walk into the lobby and make those reports. So, those are always things that we look at. We do keep them on our board, and officers will give specific locations extra attention based on those reports. And then I would just say, after the recent comment on Facebook, that if someone does have concerns about something they saw, what their interpretation of it was, or their perspective, or why something happened a certain way, our supervisors are always available to, to take calls like that, to give feedback, to get understanding. We want to do the best that we can. Sometimes there's circumstances that play in that a citizen may- circumstances that play in that a citizen may or may not know, or there's a training opportunity or correction for us on our part. You know, so it is helpful for us to have that respectful dialogue and feedback and understanding of someone's concerns. So I would always encourage that if people have questions or concerns. And if a supervisor's not on duty, or they're on a call for service, we do call back. Were there any questions or comments on traffic?
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Sims.
Not really a comment, but just, Julia, chief, just thank you for making that a priority. I really appreciate that.
Yeah, and it's always going to be, as you guys know, it's a splitting kind of priorities. So sure as we give a lot of traffic enforcement, then maybe something at the parks is become a new priority, and we need to give attention at the parks. Or unfortunately, this last week, we saw uptick in graffiti for some reason. And so our officers were trying to be a little more present in the parks and areas that we saw issues with that. So it is about, you know, handling our calls for service, but also focusing on what the concerns are in the community and obviously the traffic safety. All right, if there's no other questions or concerns in regards to that.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Gilio.
No, I definitely understand. I just, I think, the thing that I always think about is like how, and I know that there are different metrics that have been used. And I think, to me, like the question I'm always asking is like, how is there like an objective, transparent, like measure of success, right? And like that, and it's really difficult on some of these questions to think about, like how are we improving? How are we getting better at these things? Because like, right now, like the answers feel very much like, you know, there's more general enforcement, or there's more, it's like, well, yes, I definitely, I think that, I see it. But wanting to kind of get down the granular, to like, what's something that we can measure, you know, like four months from now versus today? Or what's something that we can like measure on an enforcement basis from today that was that's different than four months ago? And that, to me, is where like the metric of success, and having something that's objective, transparent, and easy for us to understand, easy for the community to understand, that's what always feels like is kind of missing in some of these conversations, is how to have a very objective measure. I mean, I know citations, like overall citations, that feels like a very, you know, what's the overall number of citations, overall number of interactions with officers, those feel more transparent, more objective. And so that's kind of what I want to focus in on, is how can we say, okay, if this is a priority, how are, you know, how are there more interactions with the public around this thing? Or really, what is, what's the right question to be asked?
Sure. And to meet that transparency, several months ago, Julie and I came up with the monthly reports on our traffic stats. So that is out there, and we have been doing that for you guys. But I would say too, you know, I mean, I have a different perspective to some degree, like our measure of lack of traffic crashes is a wonderful measure of, you know, what the traffic safety is. You know, from my previous agency, we had a lot of crashes. We had a lot more traffic and, you know, bigger roadways. But I know when I first started here, it was kind of, it was a little bit silly, but kind of telling to me, like I opened our trunks, like, where are the push brooms? Why do we not have push brooms in our patrol cars? The guy's like, what would we possibly use those for? I'm like, clearing the freeway, or not the freeway, but clearing the roadways of debris and getting the roads back open and cars move in. And then I came to realize we really don't have that many crashes. And if we do, they're not significant, and our roadway system isn't impacted the ways, you know, in my previous. But I hear you, understand.
Yeah.
We're trying to meet some of those standards with putting out our traffic numbers monthly so that you guys had that visual.
Yeah, no, and I do see that. And I think that that is an improvement. And maybe there are like more comparisons that we can have, like more of a timeline of direction, things like that, to include in some of those stats too. Because I mean, often they're more isolated stats. Is that right?
I think they are.
Or do they have like a three month?
So in the weekly update, we basically say how many traffic, like calls for, or CAGs.
Calls for service and stuff.
And then traffic stats. And then there's, sometimes there's some other things. I guess I'll say, I mean, I hear what you're saying too about the measurable, and I think can always look for ways to do better. I think that the county study will help and be informative. And because I think what that helps identify is where there are, where there are real issues and where there are perceived issues. And then, you know, then it's a whole nother, like, okay, how do we deal with perceived issues? How do we deal with real issues? Yeah, I'm remembering, in my prior location, there were some, in the downtown streets, there were some wayfinding monoliths, if you will, that people hated after they were installed and thought they were a traffic safety. And they weren't. They really weren't. They did not. But, you know, over time, the public was so adamant that they were, that they ended up getting removed. And so that's dealing with the perception issues. If there's things like that that we need to address, regardless of whether or not it's real. And then if it is real, then addressing that as well.
Yeah, I would agree with that. I do think that the studies are going to be really helpful and really help provide piece of that metric that's very tangible issues in a, in a way that's going to bring long-term safety. So, yeah.
Counselor Gilio, I think you make an important point. I think for me, chief, the traffic stops is fine. I think the last one I saw for 2023 was like 1,422 or something, roughly, right? What I'd like to see is it drill down further to the number of citations that came out of those traffic stops.
Okay. And we can do that. I think that's going out monthly on the website.
Oh, on the monthly reports?
The actual traffic citation itself.
This is Counselor Patty. I was actually just looking at it. I was just going to point out, maybe page four of that report would be a great place to put what he's talking about. Citations and warnings issued right there.
So it's not currently on there, is what you're saying?
It is.
Oh, it is.
So it's monthly traffic stops, and for the month of December, it's 89.
On which, on which report?
The monthly report. I try to remember to send it to you monthly when it's uploaded, but all the departments do their monthly reporting of stats that, over time, this started well before me, that council has wanted information about. And in your weekly updates, I know I've done it a few times. I might have missed recently, but I'll do a link to that so that you guys can see, oh, it's been uploaded, and have that be a clue to go look for it.
Okay, maybe I'm not familiar with that, then I'll look at it.
Okay. Alyssa, can you point him to where that is on the website, if he were to look for that?
Yes. And I'm looking at the page right now. And it looks like we probably, well, she's probably just now collecting the January reports. So that, in February, we collect the information for January. So those aren't there yet. But if you go to the document center on our website, under public documents, so it's all the way on the left, there is monthly performance reports.
Okay, I think I've looked at that before. I'll look at it again.
All right. And then just wanted to do some updates on some activities. We've got Coffee with the Cop coming up.
Which I have flyers, if you guys want to take some as well.
So great opportunity. McDonald's has a coffee complimentary. Officers are present. Last time, we had several sergeants, myself, record staff, and some officers. And it's just an opportunity to engage. So last time, we had conversations about life, conversations about Staton, the history of Staton. We had a gentleman there that's got a lot of longevity here in our community, so heard some very interesting stories. We will rouse retired Counselor Sims well before his retirement, alarm clock hours, to come out and have coffee with us again. But it was, it was good to have engagement. Just some real personal level stuff with the officers and citizens, the staff at McDonald's. There's a retired group of gentlemen that meet there, and we engaged with some families. And there was stuff about police work and about our department, and then just stuff about life and getting to engage with people on a very personal level. So that was, that was very nice. But February 12th, 7:30 a.m. to 9:00 at McDonald's, coffee's free, conversations free. Staton PD took part in the Special Olympics polar plunge on Saturday, so dove into the very, very cold water, along with some staff from Salem PD, Marion County, Woodburn, and then about 400 other citizens across Marion County. So that was great. Staton raised over $500 for Marion County, specifically Special Olympic athletes. As you know, Officer Babcock officially got sworn in last week, last week. A lot has happened in the last week for me. But he's doing well. He's out there assigned to Officer Leonard currently. So he's actually been with us for a few weeks now. And he's doing well. And then Officer Trumbly's cruising along at the academy. And graduation is in March. I'll make sure that you all get invitation to attend graduation if you choose to be there.
And we will have both of them come here to meet you at some point in the future.
Yes.
Real quick.
Go ahead, Counselor Patty.
Thank you. Any foreseeable date for the forum that we've previously discussed from you, or the police agency in general, Public Safety Forum?
Oh, forum?
Yeah.
Forum? What forum am I supposed to be working on?
F O R U L.
I don't have a specific date. I have some follow-up with Julia on some other dates that we're trying to get some stuff dialed in. But no, I don't have a specific. It is in the works.
I think one of the things that we were thinking about, and we need to get together on this, but as we have more, or have criminal activity go to our municipal court, we thought that would be a good opportunity to have a forum where we're kind of talking about police, we're talking about court. And so just kind of, so I guess my thought is maybe around that timeframe, or a little bit before that timeframe, so that we can share with the public and get input from the public. But we'll, we'll update you that. I'll add that to my list of things to update you guys on.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Is that it? Julia?
Yes, that is. Is that not enough? That was a lot.
Leaves us to communication from mayor and council. I don't really have anything at the top of my head at the moment. So Counselor Gilio, go ahead.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I always wanted to just bring around, bring back around this SMAC discussion. And I actually forgot my notebook, and I had some notes in there, so I'm just going off the top of my head. But yeah, that's the small municipalities. I actually forget the whole acronym, associations. I just know it's spelled SMAC.
I think it's Advocacy Coalition.
Advocacy Coalition, that's right, yeah. That's SMAC, yeah. Small Municipalities Advocacy Coalition, no. So yeah, with the gentleman who come and present about that. I am in favor of considering moving forward with that. I think that as, you know, we have a number of these things that just continually come down from the, from the state government. I mean, how many times do we have, have conversations where, yeah, our hands are tied by the state government, hands are tied by the state government. And I think having a voice in that body that is specifically working to lobby other lawmakers outside of our own lawmaker, we have a great lawmakers from here with Senator Gerard and Representative Deal. But beyond that, to be able to really have a voice on behalf of those smaller municipalities. And I know there's a number of issues. I think about the 10,000 person limit in terms of the number of, when it comes to zoning laws and things like that, that I know they're very specific to small municipalities. And I think it would be really valuable to kind of get on the ground floor. I do think it's obviously an organization that's a little bit towards the beginning, something that's just starting. There's just a, not tons and tons of cities, but one that I think would be good to be getting in on earlier, and be one of the larger bodies represented in that circle, which I think would help lend some weight to our voice and help be a part, a large part of that conversation. So I think about LOC, you know, Legal Organ Cities, you know, I think they do some good work. But I don't think that, you know, Staton's particular issues and Staton's particular things are really valued, you know, that much, because there's so many cities that are being represented. And I think to be able to have a group that's more specifically focused on our issues, on the issues of smaller communities and rural communities, I think is something that's valuable. And I don't think it's too much of an investment. I think it's just a few thousand, a couple thousand a year. And I think for something like that, makes, makes a lot of sense.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Patty?
Yeah, I think I agree with the majority of what Counselor Gilio just pointed out about that group. I would, so procedurally, at this point with this, I would like to see this come back as general business for some kind of formalization of an agreement with the Small Municipal Advocacy Coalition. And then that way, we could have kind of a full-fledged out conversation if we all agree on putting funding behind this. And in that vein of thought, and to Counselor McDonald's point, you know, I didn't really realize the marijuana hours was an issue for another counselor on this. But hearing his point on that, sounds like maybe we need to elevate this to general business in the next meeting as well, or whatever meeting where we can discuss that adequately.
Okay. I thought we took, I thought the council took no action at last meeting.
Yeah. And so for me, hearing that Counselor McDonald wants us on this, I think that we need to have a formal discussion and take a vote. I mean, that's, that's kind of where I'm at on that.
Yeah, I didn't push it too hard when we were talking about it before, because I felt like I was the only one that had a differing opinion. It's kind of in the minority there. But again, I'm, just, just for the, purely for the sake of trying to treat every business fairly, without regard for personal feelings of what a particular business does, I think is, is the way to move forward on that. So, yeah, I mean, if it's, if, if it's agreeable, I would like to bring that back, because I don't think, at this point, that they are being treated fairly.
And to that point, I think I agree with you. And I'm willing to have that conversation again.
Counselor Sims?
I'm definitely willing to have the conversation again, to be fair with the business.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Gilio?
Yeah, I mean, I think my position on this is known. I don't think that it's worth another conversation. Although, I mean, obviously, I can be in the minority on that. And my reasoning for this is fairly simple. I don't think it affects, I do think it should be a more holistic conversation. And I think generally, like, I know that there are differing opinions on this. I know this is an issue that I think gets to the heart of, yeah, there are very different opinions on this. And I think when council made this decision, when it did, I think it fundamentally made a wrong decision to allow marijuana shops at all in our town. And the main reason for this is because the voters in our community voted against it. And many other communities, I mean, when we looked at that list of communities of like sizes, there was a number on those lists that don't, don't allow them at all. And those were all cities where their communities had voted overwhelmingly against it. And what we had chosen to do at that time was to say, okay, actually, we're not going to listen to the will of the voters in our community. We're going to take steps beyond what the voters have said, and we're going to allow them in. And so considering that we're allowing and actually going around what the voters had decided in our community, then we're going to put some restrictions around what that is. And I think, given that, that's where a lot of those violations came in. So I'm fine having the discussion again. I'm firmly against, you know, making hours broader, or, you know, or potentially, there's an opportunity to have a broader conversation about where and how those businesses operate in our community. But yeah, I think, I think that's where I'm at. And it has nothing to do on an individual level necessarily about what my opinions are. I think it has to do with just a structural, the way those decisions were made at that time period. I just, I fundamentally, I still don't quite understand how the city landed on the position it did when so many other communities of like size in the same situation that we did. It was, it was an overwhelming decision in our community that voted against that state measure, how that was really came through. And so I know we have this discussion all the time around what the will of the people is and those things. And when we is and those things. And when we have an actual vote that says what the will of people was, that's where I have a discussion of broadening beyond where I already see as being stretching what the people at that time had said. So that's where I am with it. But yeah, I mean, I would be against a further conversation, but if that's what the majority decides to do, then, then of course.
Gotcha. Thanks, Counsel Julio. Counsel, anything to say on that particular issue? No? All right, Julio, it sounds like you have some direction here.
Yep, thank you.
Can you, when you do that, can you bring the history of?
Yes.
Back in the day?
Yeah, so I did the memo that kind of gave some of the history and current stuff. Do you want more than that, or just?
No, to Counsel Julio's point, I guess what he's referencing is the actual voting within this area. So if you have that information, that'd be good. I don't know, it's relevant at this point, but if you can bring it up.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Counsel Or.
There were two kind of issues that Counsel Paty was talking about. And so the latter, I didn't have a, I don't have anything to say about that. But to the point of the small municipality advocacy council, I'm interested to hear more on that and possibly move forward with that, especially after going to the LOC conference. While it was good, and I believe that they do good advocacy work for cities in general, there, I really do feel like there was lacking in small city and rural area support. And so I think this could fill that void.
Sounds good.
Mr. Mayor?
Counsel Paty?
I was iterating my support for that also. I think, just from a dollar standpoint, I think the likelihood of a, from a business term, a positive ROI on that is pretty high. So it's a relatively small amount of money that could, could return big dividends. So I think I would support that as well.
So I'm hearing a lot of support for the SMAC. Is that SMAC? It just sounds like I'm talking SMAC. But so I think, rather than just bringing it back for discussion and then coming back with another resolution of some sort, do you guys want a resolution to say, okay, thank you?
If you have to bring Mr. Tate back, I think that was Nate, right? Sean Tate, Sean, I believe. Yeah, if you have to bring him back, you could do that as well.
Okay.
Last thing for me, now that we're thinking about it and talking about it, two things. This week or last week, last week, I signed a letter in support of ballot measure 110 revisions on behalf of the city. We were asked to get our testimony, if you will, or support in, but while the session just started today. So we did that to Counselor, to Rep. Deal, and to Senator Gerard, just expressing our support to see a change in that particular ballot measure. So we submitted that. And now that session's in place, I will try to be supportive as possible from the city's position. It's something that I think I need to bring your attention, I will. But just know that some sessions in place as of today goes to the 14th or 15th of March. So there might be more opportunities for me to weigh in on something. There was one today that came across, I don't know if you saw it, but something to do with industrial lands or something. So there's, there's an example. The collaboration between us and the City of Sublimity and Almsville, the fire districts, everybody that has a vested interest in the chamber was really showcased last week when Julie and I went to our, what do you, what do we call it, that regional?
Local leaders.
Local leaders group. And so a lot of those folks are there. And I just want to tell everybody that the collaboration and the work between all of us together is really going to make a difference in the future. And I really, really believe that. I'm not just making assumptions. It's really, you can see it's palpable. So I appreciate the relationship with the mayor of Sublimity, with the mayor of Almsville, and just the work we put into that group. So thank you, Julie, for doing that. And the last thing I will say is that if I were mayor, contest is coming up around the bend, right? Or March? Is that where the deadline? I can never remember the deadline.
I think March 1st is the deadline.
March 1st, so it's coming up.
Yep.
So all you out there that are familiar with other kids, let's go. Time to get on it. So there's some good prize money to be had. So let's go. With that, anybody else or anything else? Thanks for your time tonight, and that were adjourned.